I have some real questions. But that was incredibly disruptive and disrespectful.
A little bit.
A little bit, huh?
A little bit.
Did you expect it to be that much?
Uh, Frank?
Yeah, once I saw people like that.
Hey. Who's in the aisle here? I'm sure. I think it was someone. It's a good show. I'm sorry. 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 I'm sorry.
Good evening. The meeting, uh, the planning board meeting is called to order for today, June 29th. Frank, could you have a roll call, please?
Uh, Mr. Rico, absent. Mr. Chirone?
Here.
Mrs. Delvecchio?
Here.
Mrs. Desimoni, absent. Uh, Mrs. Garamello?
Here.
Present. Uh, Mrs. Simmons-Hurling?
Here.
Present.
The first public hearing, Frank, is on what item?
This is a public hearing to amend the ordinance of the city of Revere relative to the regulation of research and development facilities. This, this, uh, public hearing is to allow level, right now, level one, level two, and level three bio labs are allowed as a right in the Suffolk Downs Overlake District as well as the T E D District. So this amendment would, um, just allow level one and two and not allow level three.
I'm gonna open this hearing to, uh, the proponents. Are there any proponents to the change in the amendment? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Opponents? Seeing and hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Should I open it to discussion to the members?
If you wish.
Should we wait till we can make, take a vote today?
Yes, there is questions, yeah.
Anyone wanna comment on the item at hand?
The scientist from Cambridge, did he end up submitting any further information after Monday?
Did the scientist from Cambridge, uh, submit any other further information?
Uh, no, he, he did not. He, uh, not to the planning board. He, he may have to the city council.
Okay. He notes, my, my comment on this is, um, that H Y M bought that property with the understanding of what the zoning ordinance was in the city of Revere at that time. They've entered into, into a series of agreements, including affordable housing over and above what, what Boston requires and other agreements with the city of Revere. And we've approved the overlay district for biomet, uh, facilities two, three months ago, or further back than that, right, Frank?
Yes.
Six months ago?
Yes.
We've, we've approved that with that understanding to the benefit of the city of Revere, since it's not, that reduces the amount of residential in the area and increases the amount of basically industrial or, or service-related property. I would think it would be abundantly unfair to H Y M or any, any developer that, once they enter into an agreement and start prepping a location, that the city of Revere changes any of its zoning ordinances. I'm not looking to, uh, advance the cause, but I certainly don't want to detract from it. That's my personal opinion. Do we have to wait for a vote? We can vote on this at the regular meeting?
At the regular meeting, right now, it'll be, uh, the hearing can be closed, it's gonna be referred to the zoning subcommittee of the city council.
This hearing is now closed. Any other comments? We can, and this can come up, uh, at, once we go to the regular meeting tonight, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, next order of business, Frank?
Next order of business, a public hearing to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Revere for the creation of accessory dwelling units within the R A, R A one, R B, and R B one districts.
Proponents? Any proponents? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Opponents? Any opponents? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any comments or questions by our members? Frank, what area is that?
So, um, as I, as I mentioned to the city council, the, uh, the premise of this whole thing is to provide means for residents, you know, particularly seniors, single parents, um, and, um, families with grown children to maintain their homes and have apartments and in-laws within a, a single-family home as an accessory unit. And it gives us a broader range of accessible and more affordable housing in the city. And basically, as I mentioned, it allowed the R A, N R A one district, and you, the maximum area would be 600 square feet for an accessory unit with one bedroom in the, in the single-family district. In the R B district, the maximum square feet would be 900 square feet with two bedrooms. And, um, uh, no accessory units will be permitted below the, the base hundred-year flood elevation. So you can't have any accessory units in a basement if you're in the flood zone. Uh, it must be located within the principal structure, so you can't convert a garage or other accessory structure as a, an accessory unit. They won't be allowed in duplexes, townhouses, or condominiums. And the parking requirements will be, uh, more lenient. Uh, if you're within a half-mile radius of the MBTA station, uh, you don't need to provide any additional parking spaces for the A D U. You just need to meet the requirements for a single-family home, which is two parking spaces. If you're beyond a half-mile radius of the T station, uh, you need to provide one additional parking spaces to the two that are required for a single family, for the A D U. And we're allowing parking to be in tandem on, in the side yard, so you can put three cars in the side yard. So a lot of, a lot of applications are denied by the site planning review committee and up before the Z B A because they don't meet the parking requirement. This gives them the ability, you know, to do, to do that.
So realistically, it's really not a two-family, they're just, uh, it's a, it's an auxiliary unit. It's like an auxiliary unit. You don't need, you don't need a second means of egress? You don't need the full?
Yes, you do. All these accessory units would have to be.
But it can be through your house.
Compliant with building codes and fire safety codes.
If I understand, a, a in-law apartment, basically, an auxiliary, right?
This is not just an in-law apartment, this is, you know, a apartment that could be rented out.
Oh, okay.
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay. So it's just not a, okay.
So for tax purposes.
It has to apply to all the codes, have to be applied, certain, to the E D S.
Absolutely, yeah. And you'd be issued a certificate that you have an accessory dwelling unit, which basically makes it a two-family.
Yeah.
Uh, so it's assessed as, assessors will assess it. Instead of a two-family, it'll be a single-family with an accessory unit.
And, and all it really, so basically, all we're doing is reducing the amount of parking requirement, right?
Yes.
And give a code for the T.
Yeah. We have more people coming in to try to make their, their, uh, the, convert to a two-family or try to legalize a two-family, and they're getting denied, and they have to pull their kitchens out. Uh, this gives them an opportunity to come in code compliant and keep that second unit as long as it, it qualifies as an A D U and meets our one-bedroom, 600 square feet, and a single-family zone, and two bedrooms, 900 square feet, which is a, which is a good-sized unit.
So, so, um, that closes that side of the hearing. That closes that hearing.
That was the question I was asking. Was I? Yeah.
Okay. Let's go to the next item.
Mr. Chairman, sorry. Was that, was that the proponent-opponent side, or that was for the, the board to speak?
We, we just spoke, the opponents or proponents, I closed that part already.
Oh, okay.
And now we're, uh, discussing on that item.
Understood.
Do you wanna say anything? Do you wanna add to it?
No, no, I, I stand as supportive of them. I'm gonna recuse myself from any votes, 'cause I have a single-family home, so.
Well, we all own homes.
Yeah, I know, but I don't.
I don't think you have to recuse yourself.
I don't wanna blur the lines here.
We wouldn't be able to vote on anything.
I know.
Uh, did you, uh, I think all you have to do is say you have a single-family home. So, the next item of business, Frank?
The next public hearing is a public hearing to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Revere relative to affordable housing. This, uh, this is what's considered inclusionary zoning ordinance that would allow up 12% of new developments greater than six units to provide affordable housing. 12% of the units have to be affordable housing.
All right, well, I have some questions, but we'll, we'll open, uh, the hearing for proponents, opponents? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Opponents? Any opponents? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the hearing and open the discussion to our members. Any questions, any comments? Frank, does this have something to do with parking?
Yeah, there are a number of offsets that would be provided to developers as an incentive to provide affordable units. And one of them is, um, the way I read it is if they're within a half-mile radius of a T station, uh, they, they're not required to provide any parking at all. Beyond a half-mile, uh, they would be required to find a half-space per unit. There are other offsets, and I will go through them. Just give me a second.
Uh, some of the other o- offsets, Mr. Chairman, include.
Excuse me?
I, I can tell you some, while he looks them up, that some of, some of the other offsets are.
One moment.
Certain building.
I'll get back to Frank.
Oh, sure.
The chair recognizes Juan Garmelo.
Thank, yeah, some of the other offsets, Mr. Chairman, include waiving of certain building permits, um, additionally, uh, yeah, so, so the waiving building permits, the, the parking reduction, if you will, for certain parts of the, certain units built close to transit, essentially. Um, and, uh, this kicks in, you know, with some of the other things that this does is ensure that folks, uh, are not making payments in lieu of, of, of building onsite, 'cause we all, obviously, we want, if, if people are building, they have the space, uh, they, they build the, the units on the property. Um, and I think those are, those are the major offsets, uh, the parking, the permit, the permit stuff. I don't believe there's a tax relief component to this.
Uh, no.
Frank can correct me if I'm wrong on that.
No, they'd just be waiving permit fees.
Yeah.
And that would be it.
So you don't pay for a permit? You don't have to pay for a building permit? Put your microphone on.
Oh, sure.
You don't have to pay for a building permit?
Only to this.
Only for the 12%, wha- whatever it is, I'm gonna just tell you what, if, if I may from the chair. Uh, I'm not comfortable with no parking for multi-unit development. We just passed an ordinance, or we just heard from an ordinance, in which a single-family house and auxiliary unit needs three parking spaces within the same, uh, the same, uh, distance from a MBTA station. Am I right, Frank?
Correct.
And now they're gonna have multi-unit dwellings, this ordinance, as for multi-unit dwellings with no parking spaces.
And no permit.
Well, whether they pay for the permit or not, that's, 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 not having parking in areas, yeah, you, you've drive through Beach Mart, you know, with the time, and it's, uh, I have a close family friend who lives on, on Brad Street Avenue, and getting from, trying to navigate those streets in the wintertime is, uh, is very, is very difficult. And, and it's just, to reduce parking to zero, I, I for one, I can't, you know, someone's gonna have to convince me of that. I'm skeptical. What do you think, um?
I feel the same way. I'm still, I'm still dumbfounded by the permit. I mean, the city always needs money.
Juan, did you wanna address this?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, obvi- obviously, the no parking is, is a touchy subject. Um, you know, there's some, we gotta think about this, the macro level of this, right? In order to ensure affordability, we have to make sure that, you know, we're catering to that type of crowd. Folks who are living close to the T station, the reason my parents moved to Rivera was because we were close to a T station, right? That was 20 years ago, when you could find an apartment for a thousand bucks and fit three, four, five people in it, when you have a family. You know, that's no longer the case, right? Um, in fact, we're looking at my house, you know, to downsize, to park our, our car usage, 'cause we don't, we're, we're close to all the 110, 117, 116, the blue line, all, all that stuff. Studies continue to show that if you're close to transit, you're more likely to use it. Um, you know, the, the cost offsets, I understand the building permit part, that's supposed to help developers, right? We understand we're asking them to, to do a lot here by providing 12% of the units to be affordable. So, so we gotta cut some stuff off, right? So, so we know that parking is a significant expense for, for, for developers. Um, and additionally, uh, you know, buil- ensuring that we're doing the waiving building permit to continue to ensure that we support our smaller, our small to mid-size and local developers here in, in the city. Uh, the other tax relief, sorry, I, I was able to pull it up in the, in the meantime, there is dimensional relief to allow the, for smaller units to, to, you know, so you'll have more actually density. And, and let's remember, friends, right? If you have more density, you're gonna be able to ta- tax on that moving forward, right? Um, so, so it's not like we're not gonna make money out of these units. We're gonna make money out of these units just as much as the next person. So, we're gonna be, yeah, it's an offset, right? But we wanna keep our families here. I can't tell you how many of my, the kids I grew up with went to high school with, they can't afford, they've moved up to Lynn, Livfield, they, they've left the city. And so we have a little bit of a drain, brain drain in the city, because people just can't afford to stay here. It's not just like, we're not just talking about someone from somewhere else, which is the other piece about this ordinance, which is that, um, it gives priority to Revere residents. So if you're a Revere resident watching this right now, uh, you have a one, a seven in 10 chance of getting one of these affordable units, uh, and, because we're gonna, you know, this ordinance gives priority to you. And so, uh, so I get the no parking thing, people get very antsy about a parking, I, I get it. I live across the street from the beach, the parking situation with the meters last year, it's a constant thing. You know, I complain about it sometimes, 'cause when I, well, I used to live across the street, my parents still live there, I used to complain about it, but at, at the end of the day, people can take the train here, people often, you do take the train here, uh, and we wanna continue to encourage that. Uh, it also doesn't require that we have no parking, it just gives the developer the opportunity to offset parking for more units, you know, offset their cost. And so, um, I, I, I hear the concerns about the parking, Mr. Chairman, I just think that, uh, I think that we're in a little bit of a crunch here in the city. We wanna keep this a working-class city. I know you care about that, and we're, we're pushing workers out, work, working families out.
Did you wanna speak?
I think that if, if the goal is truly to make it affordable, then cars are not going to help keep it affordable, right? What's going to help keep it affordable is keeping MBTA fares down, keeping bus fares reasonable, making, making other systems workable as opposed to vehicles. And, I mean, with, with gas continuing to rise, insurance, car payments, et cetera, et cetera, it, it's not helping. So for, parking is always a sticking point, no matter where you are, no matter what the availability may be, but to keep it a requirement, I don't know is serving the purpose.
I, I'm not really following the, following the logic behind it, because not having parking doesn't say that someone who lives there doesn't have a car. So, I don't eat, I can see when we have transit-oriented development, in which we reduce the number of parking spaces, maybe from one and a half to one and a quarter, in developments, because we're trying to encourage single, uh, one-bedroom apartments, so you anticipate one car. But I know very few people who don't own a car. They could take, they take the train into Boston, I liked public transportation, especially before the pandemic, I used public transportation always when I went to Boston because of parking, but I've never, since I was 16 years old, not owned a car. So, if we're going to have low-cost, affordable housing, I still think, I, I don't, unless you say anybody who owns that apartment can't have a car, which we can't do constitutionally, I just think not providing parking, mandating a certain amount of parking spaces per unit is a recipe for disaster. Uh, and, and every developer will avail themselves of reducing the amount of parking they need per unit, 'cause that's other land that they have to develop for parking spaces. I, I just have a, a problem with the parking, that providing, reducing parking to zero.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, I think that for places, for, for developments that are close to T, to zero, makes a lot of sense. I mean, I, I support what the ordinance says is about, about developments that are farther away from the T, uh, you know, there, I think there's a requirement for a half a parking spot for, per unit, uh, which, which doesn't necessarily solve your, your concerns entirely, but, um, you know, I tell you, this is, I don't have a large-scale development, I have 300, 3,000 square feet in my house, but, but we went from two cars to one car, 'cause, you know, we're near the bus lines, and we, we're conscious of that, and we, you know, we just don't need that many cars anymore. Right now, the or- the ordinance reads that, that we're mandating, is it two parking spots per unit, which I think is, uh, interesting, uh, and maybe excessive. I, you know, I think the people that are moving to Rivera, the people that are choosing to stay, stay in Rivera are here for accessibility to Boston, and I think that some sort of reduction in parking is necessary, you know?
Uh, it's, it's for a one-bedroom, it's, uh, 1.5 spaces, and for a two-bedroom, it's 1.75 spaces.
Yeah.
Uh, my recommendation when this came out was to have, uh, a blanket requirement across the city, at least one parking space per unit for an affordable housing project. I know we have, um, we have resident sticker parking now, resident parking only, and those resident stickers will not go out to projects such as these, because they, they don't meet the parking requirement or. the parking requirement, or, unless you meet the parking requirement or a pre-existing non-conforming use, which we got's a parking, you're allowed a sticker. So all these new development projects are not getting parking stickers, so they need to provide onsite parking for their residents, or they're going to be forced to go elsewhere.
All right, I think we've spoken enough about that issue, it's going to come up again if, in the regular
As I said, everything's going to be referred to the zoning subcommittee, and these type, this discussion will be hashed out even further before
Are we going to make recommendations on each of these items?
At our regular meeting, we can, the planning board can make recommendations to the zoning subcommittee.
All right, so the public hearing portion of this meeting is now closed, we'll move on to our regular order of business, is that correct, Frank?
Yes. Let me get my
I get, the first order of business is I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the previous meeting.
So order.
So, so move the motion
So move, sorry.
So, the motion, the motion by Juan Pablo, seconded by Anthony Del Vecchio, without objection, will accept the minutes of the previous meeting. Frank, the next order of business, please.
Okay, previous meeting minutes approved. Second order of business in the regular meeting is a vote on a recommendation to the city council with respect to a proposed zoning ordinance amendment relative to the regulation of research and development facilities to just, bio safety level one and two.
Can I move that we, we vote that motion, that amendment down? Is that, is that motion in order? I'm, I move that, that amendment be defeated. So how would that be, a yes vote or a no vote? How would that be, Frank?
I need a second to that.
Need a second? I'll second that. Mr. Del Vecchio's the second. So the, so the motion would be that the, that the recommendation of the planning board is that, is that we do not reduce the bio level, and that we remain with the status quo.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, could I further move that when the vote be taken, it be taken by, by just a plain voice vote, so we don't have to do a roll call?
I, I think we, we should do a roll call, because it has to be
I think it's all in favor.
Right, so like, yes and nays, if, if we have unanimous, if we have, if everyone is okay with your amendment.
I'll entertain a voice vote, vote in fa- all those in favor of that, of the no of the recommendation of a no? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
So approved.
Opposed? None. Next?
Next is a vote on recommendation to the city council with respect to the proposed ordinance amendment for the creation of accessory dwelling units in the RA, RA1, RB, and RB1 district. There is one amendment I would, modification I'd like to make and suggest to the city council. This is only for single-family homes, so if you have a two-family home, you cannot put an accessory unit and make it a three. So I, I think we need to, it's, that's not very clear in the way this ordinance is written, so I, I think we have to add that modification to our recommendation to the city council.
I agree. All right, whatever you say. So read, read the, read the motion.
Okay. The motion is to approve the A D U ordinance with a modification that stipulates that existing two-family homes would not be eligible for an accessory dwelling unit, only single-family homes create an additional unit. All in favor?
That's the motion? I have to, someone has to make that motion, go ahead. No, someone has to make that motion. Motion by Anthony Del Vecchio, I need a second.
I second.
We have a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Third item of business, Frank.
Third item is a vote on recommendation to the city council with respect to proposed zoning ordinance amendment relative to affordable housing.
You need a motion?
I motion.
Your motion in favor?
Yes.
Juan?
Second, yeah.
Juan, second, Anthony Del Vecchio, motion in favor. I'm going to ask for a roll call on this one. This is the one that has no parking for the, for the units.
Yeah, I mean, I, my recommendation would be to recommend to the city council to modify this to require a blanket parking requirement of at least one space per unit for any affordable housing.
Anyone opposed to that?
Yes.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think we should just let the zoning subcommittee battle it out.
I think that we, we need
Oh, yeah, that's another question.
I, I think technically, we need to make a recommendation of yes or no, so that they can move on it, isn't that correct?
Well, we can make a recommendation just to send it to the subcommittee and
You can do that.
We could do it, either we
We, we, okay, so
It's going to be discussed at the zoning subcommittee anyway, especially that, that issue, so.
So the motion that we'll entertain from Juan is that we will forward this to the zoning subcommittee of the Revere City Council without a specific recommendation of the planning board, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I need a second for that?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Anthony Del Vecchio, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Okay, is there any other business, old business or new business?
Uh, there is. We have a request, for some reason, back in 1998, I don't know if you're familiar with the Oak Tree Lane subdivision up in North Revere?
Yep.
Off of Franklin, Oak Tree Lane and Waller Street was extended, it was called Ledzview Estates.
Didn't we, we spoke about this like a year ago, right?
Yeah, but all the, all the lots were released by the planning board back in 1999, however, one lot, for some reason, never got released, Lot 8. Now, the homeowner who owned it for many years is trying to get refinanced, and they, the attorneys and the bank are telling them, you need a release from the planning board of that covenant. So we need to get majority of the planning board to sign the release that I have in front of me for that covenant.
Does that need to be made a motion? Does it have to be moved or just signed off on?
It, it has to be approved by the board that they release
Motion to approve the release.
Release the covenant for Lot 8, Oak Tree Lane.
Motion to release, to approve that release.
Motion by Juan Pablo.
I second it.
Seconded by Mr. Del Vecchio. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No one's opposed.
I think that's all the business before us tonight.
Meeting adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Juan, seconded by Mr. Del Vecchio.
Wonderful.
We are, we are adjourned.
Great. Are we off?